Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. Okay, welcome everybody to the Monday, October 5th, 2020, Kewaresh County Board of Education Work Session, and we're actually meeting in person today for most of us, and we do have two online or two via phone, Barry Schumaker and Holly Grimsley are joining us remotely. A few ground rules here, we are separated by six feet distance at least, all of us. We are going to all wear a mask while we're waiting if we're not talking, if we're talking, we can take the mask off, so you can read our lips if you need to. So those are the ground rules, we'll go ahead and move on through our agenda, we have a first item is to adopt the agenda, 2.01, I need a motion in a second.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did you want to do a roll call?
We're all here in the room, but I can do a roll call. So Barry Schumaker?
Here.
Holly Grimsley?
Here.
Carolyn Carpenter?
Yes.
Myself, Rob Walter. Laura Blackwell?
Here.
Cindy Furtenbaum?
Here.
And David Harrison?
Here.
And then... So we're all present, is our teacher liaison, is she joining us today?
She had a class, maybe you're late.
Okay. All right, so back to the agenda, 2.01 is adopting our agenda tonight. It's been on board docs, so everybody can see it, it's also up on the screen. You do need to turn on your mic.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, looking at the agenda, and I don't know if I need to put it on as an item, but I know that when we look at the COVID report, I do want to look at what our motion was at that time, now I don't know if we'll have a motion on that, but look at what our motion was that we originally had at that time for discussion, so I don't know if we need to add, you know, that in addition to that.
We can include it as part of the discussion, if that's what you like.
Okay, but there may be a motion attached to that.
If you're planning on adding a motion, then you would need to probably amend the agenda, yes.
Well, I would say it might possibly be, you know, when we discuss it, but I have information and things I want to share with the board, and there possibly could be a motion.
Certainly going to call on you to let you share, but if you're going to add, if you want to make a, you want to make a motion, then you probably should amend the agenda.
Possibly, like I say, after I share the information, there may be a motion, so if you say I have to add that, I will.
You could amend the agenda at that time, right?
Okay, so wait till that time? Okay, I'll wait till that time then, because we do have that report on there, and that would be a time I would do it.
Okay, so we have an agenda, I need a motion in a second to move through it, so...
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion by Ms. Furtenbaum, a second by Ms. Blackwell, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, hearing that, our agenda is set, so we're going to move on to our first item, which is under reports, which is our audit report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, and we have our Chief Financial Officer Kelly Clutz, and let me get your name again, Mr. Adams, pronounce your last name for me.
Saperk.
Saperk, welcome.
Thank you.
And you can take off the mask when you're talking, but just keep it on when you're not.
Yep. All right, I'm here to present a summary of the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020, everybody should have in front of them a PDF of the 10-page summary that I'm presenting, you've also been provided the actual audit report that has been submitted to the LGC but has not been reviewed yet, that audit report includes four letters, three opinion letters, and a letter on internal controls, and all four of those letters indicate a unmodified opinion, a clean audit report, and no deficiencies in internal controls, and no findings over compliance matters related to state and federal funds that we audited as major this year, so again, within that 70-page financial statement, clean, unmodified opinions, and the presentation I'm going over here is kind of a summary of some of the information found within that document, most notably items regarding fund balance over, or in the general fund, other special revenue fund, and the school food service fund, so... First page is just a little graph showing cash on hand for the last three years, as of June 30, 2020, in the general and other special revenue fund, those are funds one and fund eight, they used to be combined to create your local fund, long ago separated out into fund eight, where some of your special revenue, state and federal programs, but combined, they provide $25.7 million of cash on hand as of June 30, 2020, which is up from $22 million the previous year. Next, we have the total fund balance and the available fund balance provided for the last three years, the total fund balance, $22.7 million, the difference between the available fund balance and the total fund balance is the non-spendable and restricted fund balance related to inventories, prepaid's, and any receivables, those amounts are not spendable, because they are either not in the form of cash, or you have not received them yet, so total fund balance, $22.7 million, that is made up of two categories, assigned and unassigned, assigning fund balance is a management or board function, you assign it for various items, like you have self-insured workers' comp assignment, you have assigned fund balance for future retirement benefits, or spiking payments that you'll have to pay if certain people retire, and also assignments for next year's budget, so one of the largest assignments in your general fund is $9 million assigned for the 2021 budget, so those make up the assigned and unassigned, and are the biggest portion of the 20, of the total fund balance. Next graph just shows you the income and expenses, these two funds combined create nearly $80 million of revenues and expense, and you net about $2.6 million of increase in fund balance for this year, $1.1 million last year, $2.3 million three, two, three years ago, 2018, so a history of increasing fund balance on, again, your total revenues and expenses this year, nearly $80 million combined. And here's all the actual numbers reflected in those three charts, again, you can see $25.7 million of total cash on hand, you have some receivables, some inventories and prepaid's, and those fund balance numbers, as I described, $1.2 million of your fund balance is non-spendable in the form of inventory and prepaid's, retirement makes up $600,000, your 2021 budget is $9.2 million, and $2 million of your fund balance in fund eight, by virtue of just being within fund eight, a special revenue is automatically assigned for those special revenues, so that assigned million dollar of $13.4 million makes up those various assignments. Your revenues in those two funds mostly come from the county, $70.6 million, and you can see that growth over the last three years, $67 million the year before, $62.9 the year before that, and then your total expenditures, primarily instructional and support services totaled $77.2 million last year, for a total of net increase in fund balance of $2.6 million. Are there any questions about the general fund and other special revenue fund balance? Again, this is the most important fund balance number in the statements, probably the most important number in the statements, it's what you use to balance your budget, any shortfalls in perceived state and federal revenues will be available for appropriating using these, this fund balance, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms.
Question, and this excludes the enterprise accounts for kids plus the school nutrition, right?
It does, this is just the, this is just the general fund and other special revenue fund, that is the majority of your fund balance, you also, your biggest revenue source is in your state public school fund, but you don't carry fund balance, that, those dollars are use it or lose it, so these two funds make up the majority of your available funds on hand, you also have a little bit in the capital outlay fund, it's only like $50,000, and then the individual schools, they have money in their accounts on hand as well, but this does not include the child nutrition and after-school care, which we'll talk about the child nutrition here in a little bit.
Anything else?
Ma'am, Mr.?
Mr. Harrison?
Ma'am, so when COVID came along and the CARES Act came along, money came from various sources, do any of these numbers include those federal or state kind of emergency funds that were provided to Kewaresh County schools?
Yeah.
Or do these numbers at all reflect a, an ability to shift certain funds into fund balance, given that the CARES Act money at some point will have to be spent a certain way, or...
Right.
Or not be available?
Those monies flowed through the state public school fund, and again, those were use or lose it, some of the money did carry over to be used before December 2020, but none of the revenues flowed through the general fund or the other special revenue fund. Unfortunately, a lot of that CARES Act money was your own money, just re-appropriated in a different program, but the extra money that did flow through, flowed through the state public school fund, now certainly there are some savings that were recognized in local funds, but it wasn't revenues, so because of COVID, obviously, there's certain expenditures that were not replicated during those months that were recognized before, like subs, maybe some, some gas for buses, but, so there are savings that I think produced part of the increase in fund balance, but not direct revenues flowing into that fund, those funds, again, they're use or lose it, those ran through the state public school fund, they're part of the 20, $220 million of state money you got, but it, they did not flow through those funds. Any other questions?
Yes, this is Barry Schumaker.
Go ahead, Barry.
Mr. Saperk, I would like to ask you about the assigned funds, the $13,449,000.
Okay.
What led to this huge increase?
The, the primary increase, and I, and I don't have last year's budgeted appropriated fund balance, but the biggest increase, the, the assignment for workers' comp has been the same for years, the retirement dollars changed a little bit, but it was, the biggest piece was the, it's called assigned for subsequent years expenditures, basically, you've already approved a budget resolution that plans on using $9.2 million of fund balance, that $9.2 million, I believe, was about $3 million a year ago, but is up to $9.2, so that is, that's just simply approving the budget that estimates you might use $9.2 million of fund balance, and so we're seeing, I personally have been out to now 12 different districts, every one of them has added fund balance in local, it to various degrees, $150,000 all the way to $10 million, you've added $2.6 million, again, primarily from savings, but I believe the intent across the board has been save as much fund balance this year because of the uncertain future, and I think the assignment of $9.2 million is a, is a, is a sign of that uncertainty, that the idea that there could be significant decreases in state funding, nobody knows how much federal funding, you know, might come down because of the, for this COVID response, so, you know, certainly reasonable to have made $2.6 million of fund balance this year, but expect to spend $9 million of fund balance next year, just because of that uncertainty, and, and what school might look like for the next, next year and beyond.
Okay, thank you, Barry, Ms. Grimsley?
Yes, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I'm not able to pull that document up, so I heard that $3 million was used last year, we've got a $2.6 savings that we're expecting to spend $9 million in the fund balance for next year, so I guess I'm wanting to make sure what, are we going to be at a deficit even if we have a saving? Not a deficit in the whole balance, but what we're going to use, compared to what we've been using in the past?
So the, the previous year, at the end of 2019, or just June 30, 2019, you anticipated possibly using $3 million of fund balance, but you ended up adding $2.6 million of fund balance, so whether there was a $5.6 million savings, or, or how, what you were on track for using fund balance-wise before COVID, I don't know, but you have essentially thought you could use $3 million, but you ended up adding $2.6, now we're going into 2021 with a budget that anticipates using $9.2, that might not come to fruition, of course.
Ms. Clutz is coming to the table, if she can help explain something to us.
Hi, I'd just like to, you know, provide a little bit of clarity on what I was thinking when I appropriated the $9 million, it's, it's really, you know, more of our local needs that we have here, so generally, we appropriate about $3 million, and so you would expect to then appropriate another $3 million each year, the next thing is, like Adam said, we, we didn't increase our revenues into local, but what I am able to do, and was able to do, was to reimburse local expenses, so the state give us flexibility with some state money, and just for an example of that would be our summer school type expenses, so we didn't have summer school, so we were able to reuse that money, and I was able to reimburse us for local expenses like custodians, so they said, you know, COVID is, we need custodians, and we can reimburse that, so I was able to put that money into fund balance, so that ends up being the, about the amount that we appropriated, that we increased our fund balance, so that $2.6 million really came from moving around state dollars, so knowing that that was COVID money, and that I would have to spend that money later, then I appropriated $3 million for that, say for PPE, for signage, for computers, for all of those things, the thermometers, those walk-through scanners, water fountain adapters, all of those things, I had to appropriate that money so that we could spend it, we can't spend it unless we appropriate it, so then there's that three to four million that we're looking for there, and then there was the uncertainty of our ADM being not held harmless, right, and so when we prepared the budget, we didn't know whether the ADM was going to be held harmless or not, now that could have been anywhere from $3 million to $6 million adjustment for us, so I appropriated about $3 million, so out of the $9 million that I appropriated, I expect I'll spend five or six at this point, since we're being held harmless, I don't expect we'll spend the nine. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I...
Yeah, Ms. Grimsley, are you, is your question answered?
If I can just, like, tell it, ask you an additional question.
Okay, then Ms. Furtenbaum.
Kelly, can you hear me good?
Go ahead, Ms. Grimsley, yes.
Okay, so I, I've got the explanation, I just want to make sure that you're saying that you're probably thinking that even though you appropriated the nine, you think you're only going to use up to about six, is that what I heard?
About five or six.
Possibly.
Yes, yes, that's what my expectation is, yes.
Okay, so with that, if we, and I know the hold harmless is for this year, but should we not have the hold harmless for next year, are you accounting for that, or will that be something we'll have to look at then?
So we're looking, we, we have approximately a $20 million fund balance, I plan to spend about five this year, five or six, we'll still have a $15 million fund balance, and so, you know, if things get to be really difficult, like they could be, I still feel like we can carry for two or three years and be okay without having to reduce staff and that type thing, with what we've been able to accumulate over the years.
And that would be in the appropriation for the next year, would not be, it's not included in the nine million, you can't appropriate past one year, so...
Right, but I'm kind of thinking of that in the long term.
Okay, and then, I guess, with that, if we were to have to, if there is some type of hold harmless that we have to consider, that they don't extend for the next year, is that, would that be, you, you kind of touched on one meeting about, and the history of what we've had to do with reversion, would that include that in your thinking of this number, or would those also be in addition if we had to do some type of reversion?
It would be, so it's something that I'm thinking about, but what you got to remember is ADM is, determines the amount of teachers and staff that we have, right, so if our staff, if our students do, do not return, we don't need that many staff members, and while we don't want to reduce, and we're not going to reduce because of the financial, we will reduce if students don't return, and you can do that through natural attrition, so you just stop hiring once you know students aren't going to return, and you'll be able to absorb that, but what we don't want to do is terminate or lay anybody off that's currently employed, but we will absolutely have a method to recoup those dollars if the state doesn't, if we don't get them because the students don't show up, so we will react in several different ways, one, we will reduce our staff if we don't have the students, two, we will use our fund balance to carry until we have enough vacancies or attrition to take care of that.
But, but all of that, none of that will hit, none of that will hit fund balance until after June 30, 2021, which would be a different budget and a different appropriated amount, not part of the nine million.
Finish up, all of you got to move on to Cindy.
I guess not, no, Rob, if you don't mind, I would like one more question answered.
Please finish.
And so I don't have to come back, if, if we have to, if there is, I get that piece of it, but are, I guess my other question was, are there any monies that's coming down to us from either the federal, state level, that would be money for like the COVID period, that we would have to possibly in the future return?
So there's definitely money that's come down, so we had some last year, and we also have some this year, significant dollars, just the one appropriation is a $3 million appropriation, so there's definitely dollars that are coming down, I don't have any reason to believe we're going to have to return that, but keep in mind, it's just a one-time allocation, it's not a recurring allocation.
And it comes with certain restrictions of what you can spend it on, and only those items, and maybe you can't utilize all $3 million of it, but you only pull it down as you spend it, it's not $3 million pushed down to you and then has to be returned.
Right.
Okay, that, that makes sense, I just wanted to make sure if there is, you know, I heard you say that the savings was a part of our fund balance, that, you know, we can apply to any and all those type of situations, but then I just wanted to make sure if there's anything that we might have to return, that's maybe a separate line item or money later that we account for those in a, in a different way, I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Those are good thoughts, okay, Ms. Furtenbaum.
Yeah, I just want to share that the audit report, if you looked at it ahead of time, proves that Ms. Clutz and her team make the best use of our dollars, and we've long talked about how we try to save the local money, provide it through the county commissioners when possible, and that's how our fund balance gets built up, and then she does everything allowable, which the auditors prove or disprove, but they always prove that it's permitted, so that we get the positive audits, so I just wanted to thank you for that and your team, so...
And of, of all the districts I'm involved in, you're probably one of, if not the, most prepared financially for the future uncertainty in both your governmental funds and the school food service fund that we haven't talked about yet, I know I'm involved in several audits that when you look at continuing to pay school food service employees who, who aren't working, and you're not producing the same level of participation, they're counting the months that they can pay these people before it has to be supplemented with local funds, before the dollars run out, if they only have a month's worth of cash on hand, that it, there's, it's difficult to maintain participation levels equal to what was occurring when kids were in school, it's just harder to get meals in front of them from a distance, and so the revenues just aren't the same, and therefore, the, they're using cash now, so...
All right, continue.
Yeah, all right, so next, we have the capital outlay fund, I told you, there's very little fund balance there, a lot of activity, $53 million worth of construction going on in the current year, but only, like I said, $56,000 worth of fund balance. The next few charts start the, providing the information for that school food service fund, as you can see, for 2020, the revenues and expenses are down from last year, while cash is about the same, the dark, smaller bar is your cash is about the same despite decreases in revenue and expenditures, so there was a slight decline in fund balance. Unfortunately, this fund also includes the pension and OPEB benefits related to the individuals paid out of this fund, so the net income or the net change in fund balance doesn't always reflect the, the operational profitability of that fund, so when you really look at cash, that is the, the driver for this fund, and when you look at, like I said, that dark, that dark bar, over $4 million of cash on hand as of June 30, 2020, which is about the same amount you had the year before that, so... The actual numbers are on the next page, again, $4.2 million of cash on hand, the fund balance for that fund is negative because of the giant $11.3 million of liabilities, mostly associated with the pension plan and the retirement health benefits, so it creates a negative fund balance, but again, cash is the most important number to look at on this fund, your food sales, $3.3 million, down, $1.1 million from the year before, your federal reimbursements, down $322,000 from the year before, so this number is surprisingly well, again, for kids not being in school between the middle of March and the end of the year, it becomes a challenge putting as many meals out there as possible to maintain that level of federal reimbursement, so although it's down $322,000, and it's down when you compare it to a year that had some weather-related incidents, so, and again, you're, we've already, we're a few months into the new year, again, participation's going to be down, so, so that ability to put meals in front of, in front of students, in front of kids, ends up being what ultimately will make or break this fund, but again, you have $4.2 million to provide potential future funding or future, to weather future losses in that, in that fund, again, whatever school ends up looking like, whatever, whatever lunch looks like, whether it's meals in classrooms, or small meals in cafeteria, or small groups in cafeterias, but when you look at the cost in that fund, $4.8 million, $4.9 million in food costs compared to $5.6 million the year before, salaries and benefits, $6.5 million compared to $5.6, again, that includes the pension and OPEB expense, and that fluctuates by millions of dollars every year, so in one year, you can have actually negative pension expense, and in the next year, positive pension expense, so just because the salaries and benefits are 6.5 compared to 5.6, that is not all cash outflow, there's a lot of pension and OPEB expense in there, and then your other expenditures, $1.2 million, for a change in net assets of $341,000, but again, your loss of cash was only about $80,000. in net assets of 341,000. But again, your loss of cash was only about 80,000. All right. Any questions about the child nutrition fund? From here on out, we're just kind of looking at total expenditures. You can see the biggest provider of funds is the state public school fund, $208 million. $77 million comes from the county, $53 million in the light blue capital outlay, and then at the very bottom, $12.5 million of federal funds. So again, by far, the state funds operations. The next graph is just those same numbers, but on a per pupil basis. So you see, the state provides $6,000 per pupil for you, and the county provides over $2,000. Following that is the, the actual numbers. Again, $77 million from the local sources, $53 million in capital, $208 million in state. Per pupil expenditures total, $8948 when you exclude capital outlay between local, state, and federal sources across your 33,362 And then, again, what I started with, no reportable conditions, no question costs, no findings. This is a, a very small, unimpressive little schedule, but it takes a lot to get here, a lot of time to verify. The whole audit process looked a little different this year. We did, we do our audit normally in two stages, compliance piece in the spring and year-end financial piece in the summer and fall. Obviously, COVID hit before we were out here for interim, and we tested all of our compliance testing remotely, which, again, it slows things down. It puts a larger burden on finance to provide and prepare all that information. However, I will say, for the last four, five, six years, Kelly and her staff have always provided all of our documents electronically. So again, well prepared for a situation like this. So we just, instead of receiving the files when we came onsite, we received them from the office and, and worked remotely and asked questions remotely, which was very effective. And the same thing, when we, at, at year end, we did come onsite. There was very limited staff here to provide access to some information and documents that we needed onsite. But again, most of that information was provided remotely, as had been done years before. So again, well suited for this type of situation.
That's exactly what the board wants to hear. We have a well-run school system.
That's right.
And top-notch staff. Any final questions for auditor?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make one comment. First of all, I just want to say how much I appreciate Adam. He always answers my questions in a way that an English teacher can understand, right? So he makes it very clear, does a really good job, so I appreciate that. Just want to say how much we appreciate Ms. Klutz and her staff, and that's kind of verified with everything here. It puts us in such good shape to be able to handle an emergency like we have now. Kind of what Adam was mentioning before, you know, that these examples, bus drivers now that don't have a bus to drive because we're in C, they are working every day. They are painting schools, they're doing maintenance. Last week, I got two emails from principals talking about what a difference our bus drivers had made at the location that they're at. So rather than having to lay off bus drivers and then three months later have to hire them back, we put them to work doing other things to be able to pay them, and that's worked out great, and that's because of her and her staff. And the last thing that I wanted to make sure we said was, this is also, everything that Adam and Kelly explained are things that we explain to the county so that the county manager understands everything that we said here, and that we've appropriated money to handle situations that may pop up. And so county manager, county finance person, Rodney and Mike have both been great to work with, and they understand, I think a lot of times when there's problems between the county and the school systems, they don't understand what that money is there for. And so they understand that we have money there in case we have an emergency too. So it's also a tribute to them that they're willing to understand that and put us in the position to be in where we're at. So really, all good information from the county, the system, and from Adam with this. So we just want to say thanks for everybody that's worked on that.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Anybody else? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, board members, we're going to move on to our discussion items, and we have 4.01, the naming of the new middle school. So as you know, we have a middle school under construction. It's going to open in two years, but it doesn't have a name. We do have a policy, if it's, can you bring that up on naming of the school? I just kind of wanted to talk tonight on what process do we want in place? Want to go out to the public again, solicit names, or do we want to come up with something internally? Now, open it up to?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I mean, we can open it up like we normally do. But I would like to add something just in light of, I'll say, digital age and whatnot, that any name that is brought up, that if it was possible, that the person would have to consent to having a background check done, it would be very risky of us. And I know Mrs. Carpenter has brought up many times about not naming anything after a person who's still alive. But I think sometimes there's information, and we see it in the news on a weekly basis, that comes out even many years later in a person's life. So we just want to make sure that what the nominator's recollection is of that person's contributions, or whatever it may be, that we are able to have a background check. And HR, I'm sure, could handle that if we were granted permission to do so.
Okay, thank you.
One, one thing that, oh, was.
Go ahead, Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Carpenter, go ahead.
One thing I would like to add is, I always think that it is good to have locate, I mean, locations, like road names and things like that, because, especially if someone's coming to our area new, or when you're trying to find something, if it is the name of a road or a location, it makes it so much easier to find the school. And it does make it a centralized point for our neighborhood. So I just, I just like it when we do that. And, and like the last couple of times, we got anywhere from 70 to 100 names. But we do want the community input. But I just like myself, location names. I just think it makes it so much easier.
So there are, according to policy, according to policy, there are six criteria. The name should not be so similar to the names of existing facilities as to cause confusion. The name should include a designation of the type of school, such as elementary, middle high, and a brief description of the school or specialized kind. The name may honor or memory of an individual who made a significant contribution to the education in Cabarrus County. The name may be of that of an individual prominence and reputation beyond the school district. However, priority will be given to the names of educational leaders who have a direct or indirect, indirectly helped students and in this school district to succeed. Also, the name may specify a geographic locality of the school, like Ms. Carpenter mentioned. And the name must not be, not be in conflict with policy 1100, mission statement and governing policies. Anything else we want to add to that, to folks on the, on the phone, Mr. Schumaker, Ms. Grimbley?
I have no comment. I think that.
Okay, so would it be okay if we put it out on the website, starting tomorrow, maybe, and what a deadline, one, two weeks?
I'd also, I'm sorry. I'd also like to suggest that, if possible, we find out any history of the land where the new middle school is. I don't know if that's something that, uh, we could go to a local historian, you know, to find out, because sometimes that's interesting, too.
I think Mr. Lauter can look it, look that up, or?
Yeah, usually Tim can find out, so we'll get him to pull everything that he's, he and some other people. We'll certainly work on that.
Okay, it's two weeks. Good, good. So then we'll have a list by our next board meeting, and we can narrow it from there.
What do you mean, two weeks for what?
Two weeks for the public to submit nominations.
Oh, and then review it at the November?
We will review it at our next meeting. We'll come up with a top three or four, and then we'll vote on it following meeting.
But you mean November meeting, not October's meeting?
November meeting, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, so that's our plan. We'll move on to 4.02, which is a COVID-19 update. Every two weeks or every so often, we're looking at the data. Do we have a report this week?
Yeah, I think we have pretty much the same review of the data that we sent you got, that we always send on Fridays. I can't see all the numbers from here, to be honest with you.
So why don't blow that up?
And again, that's just month to month. These are the North Carolina cases, month to month. And then you can see now they're doubling, the cases are doubling about every 70 days. And then over the last few months, when we started, it was, what's that, 44, 40, and then 62. So it's getting further out, less cases. So that's a good trend across the state. And that is the daily cases. And you can see on October 1st, we had all, about 2,277 cases, which is pretty significant increase. But that's up and down. But there has been an increase recently in cases in North Carolina is the overall trend. And then our percent positive rate as of September 28th, 6.5%. Again, that's a state positivity rate, down a little bit from the month before. And then hospitalizations in North Carolina, as you can see, have pretty much been on a downward trend, flattened out a little bit, but definitely better across the state from, you know, two months ago. And then these are the Cabarrus County cases. And as you can see, we started in October from 9/24 to October 1st. Again, we're right in the 150, 160, 170 range. So remember when we started, there were about 300 new cases a week, and we're somewhere between 150 and 200 in most weeks. So better than it was when we started, but still trending up a little bit in cases.
As of today, that was down.
Yeah. And then our positivity rate this past week went back up to 6.6. So we went up percent, a little bit more than a percent. Obviously, that's not what we want to see. But it's still within the 5% to 7% range that's kind of recommended. It's just obviously on the high side of that 5% to 7% range. But also, most analysis of that, we hope that that's a blip from Labor Day. So that's right around the two-week blip from Labor Day. So that, obviously, we're hoping that's what it is, but we don't have enough information to find out if that was specific to Labor Day. And then hospitalizations, again, have trended down and pretty much stayed down. There's a little up and down, but no problem in capacity at the hospital for the last, you know, month or so. So in, in good shape with capacity. And that has been the trend that's pretty much stayed. Those are the data points that we usually review. And again, we'll certainly, I know some of you may have comments or questions. Obviously, we're not health officials, but we can tell you anything that, as those relate to school.
Essentially, it's stable, fairly stable. It's not jumping real high, it's not dropping real low.
Yeah, pretty stable. The cases are definitely lower, but, you know, are a little higher, but still in a good range. And the positivity rate obviously went back up a whole percent, which is something that we didn't necessarily want to see. But overall, yes.
And that comes out on Wednesday, so potentially could drop again.
Yeah, the positivity rate is, is a trailing indicator. They have to pull it up because they adjust a little bit. So sometimes you may go on the state site, and it, it can be a little different. But that way, they've made adjustments up or down to make sure that that's where the positivity rate stays. So usually, that's Wednesday afternoon, sometimes Thursday morning. So we'll get a new positivity rate either Wednesday or Thursday.
I think the state was 6.2.
Yeah, right now, we're a little bit higher than the state, and really have been a little higher than the state for the past three or four weeks. Not, you know, hugely, but definitely a little higher than the state average.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harrison.
Dr. Lauter, does the local health department ever kind of qualitatively make comments about what is driving the trends that we see locally or statewide? And we have the numbers. I understand the numbers of hospitalizations and cases and that kind of, you know, data, data. But does the local health department and the regional health officials, do they ever discuss what is maintaining or causing blips in the data? Obviously, mask wearing hands, but do you, can you share any of that information?
Yeah, I think they probably would say that they're, they don't love anecdotal stuff. You know, the numbers are really the only thing you can stick to. But a good example is to say that it really, the, the positivity rate going up is about almost exactly 14 days from Labor Day. So their hope is that that was a blip up because of Labor Day, and that this week we'll have a drop back down. But you never know that exactly until you see it. So yeah, they'll tell us what their opinion is, but we'll, they'll pretty quickly kind of say, but anecdotal stuff can get you in trouble. The numbers is what you want to stick with because that's the kind of, you know, the factual stuff.
Ms. Blackwell, you?
Sure, thank you. So I actually want to talk about some other numbers that are out there right now as well. And for those that are viewing, I definitely encourage you to look at these numbers on the Cabarrus Health Alliance. I think that a lot of this conversation that we've been having, as far as the, the number for COVID, a lot of people are concerned not just about actually getting COVID, which most cases for that have been extremely mild, but also the mortality rate. And so these numbers have been broken down by age group on the Cabarrus Health Alliance website. And I do think this is valid information for the public to know, because you do have a less than 1% risk of dying from COVID if you are 65 or younger. To, to date, there have been zero deaths for 0 to 19-year-olds as well. So all of our school-aged children, at this point, have a, have a 0% chance of death. So I do think that it is important to, to take these numbers and, and see that they're very low. The potential for, for death with COVID is extremely low. And as we talk about having these children come back into school to see that there have been no deaths, I think parents and teachers and, you know, the rest of us should be happy to see that these numbers are not as scary as what they've been made out to be, so.
Where can the public find this chart?
This is actually on the Cabarrus Health Alliance website. They did post that last Friday. So it is available for them to look at as well.
Same website, or this other data that was?
Correct, yes. Same data was posted last week.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, because we've gotten some other down, and in reference to what you had stated, two, they have a breakdown of how the cases are broke down. Because also, they have one that says 0 to 19, talking about who's had the cases. And from 0 to 19, they've had since this has started, 674 people, I mean, between that age group, 0 to 19, that have gotten it. But then from, from 20 to 39, 1,446 people got it. From 40 to 59, 1,288 had gotten it. So that, those two age groups are the people that have gotten it. And that's usually, well, 0 to 19, what is that? School-aged children. 20 to 59, what is that? That is our teachers and our educators. That's the age group there that have gotten it. So that shows that those people do get it. And that's Cabarrus County numbers. So those people did get it. And then the 60 on up, which that's the fatality rate, which you mentioned, the ones that do die from it, that was a lot less. That's the lowest number that had gotten it. But they do expire from it. But that, those other two numbers, that's the highest that had gotten it. And that's numbers from, from Cabarrus County. But the other numbers that I did want to mention was, the state number as of 10/3 is 6.4. Our number is 6.6, which I am concerned about because it did escalate. And as Dr. Lauter had mentioned, I had contacted him, and you did advise me, and the, the Health Alliance advised me. They were hoping this was just from the Labor Day weekend, and they're hoping to see it go downward. But as I'd mentioned last, last time we met, we were waiting for the numbers from September 30th to find out what the responses were going to be from the survey that we had put out, to find out. the survey that we had put out, to find out how many people were going to stay remote and how many wanted to do face-to-face. Because I had asked you how we were going to look because if we could have social distancing in our elementaries. And you said you did not feel like we could comfortably do it, but you weren't sure positively, but you didn't think we could. And now you have given me the breakdown. If you would share that with our viewing audience, what you gave me this afternoon, on what we would, what would happen in our elementary K, what I asked you for was kindergarten through third grade. What was the information you shared with me this afternoon, please?
Right. So we did tell you that we would be doing the parent survey. Just to let you know, we had currently with the, you know, decline because of kindergarten enrollment and everything, we have somewhere around 32,400 kids enrolled. And we got about 31,800 responses with no repeats. So we had a tremendous response rate on the survey, to be honest, better than I would have ever expected we would have gotten. And it came in pretty much what we said, about 67%. So somewhere between 65 and 70% of people saying that they would return to school, which is, again, pretty much what we expected. What Ms. Carpenter asked for was K-3, since K-3 is going to be in Plan A, Ms. Carpenter wanted to know what percent of people in K-3 responded that they were going to come back. And so one of the things I tried to explain last week is that varies from school to school. You may have one school that 50% of the people are coming back, and another school that 80% of the people are coming back. But about 69% of kids in K-3 are coming back. And 62% of the people that are coming, of the schools that are coming back, so 13 out of 21 schools, 62% of the schools will have over 70% of the kids returning. About 38%, just under 40%, will have over 75% of the kids returning. And about 25%, 24%, over 80% of the kids are returning. So her question was specific to K-3, which will be in Plan A, which kind of goes to capacity and whether or not they would be at 50% or not. So I emailed, we kind of, Ms. Carpenter asked for that, I think, last night or this morning. So we ended up pulling that information this afternoon. I emailed you guys that, and I think I handed you out a paper copy of that before the meeting started.
And with that in mind, there is no way we could possibly, with these numbers after we got, that we could social distance. And that was one of my biggest things, because the safety feature, or having the safety for the teachers and the children, as I stated very clearly, I had to have that available for us to go into A. I cannot with a clear conscience say that this is wonderful. And B, you have, you stated that we could, that we could do social distancing and have the safety in place if we went into B. And we were just in a CNI meeting just before this meeting this evening, and y'all toured some schools today. And again, I hate to put you on the spot, but me and Cindy both were real pleased with what we heard in this CNI meeting, having the teachers say what they saw at these schools. And they happened to be in Plan B, and where they're streaming, and where they are seeing this firsthand. And I was very impressed with what I heard from our teachers saying, and the ones that toured. And if you maybe could, if you don't mind, sharing your experience, what you saw with this today.
Yeah, today, we just want to say thank you to Union County Public Schools, Dr. Houlihan, Dr. Breedlove, and, well, lots of their principals. So all of our principals today went to their level in Union County to kind of just observe, you know, arrival procedures, what the classroom looked like. So all of our principals, administrators, we did have teacher reps, which I think some of the ones you're referring to, that went on those visits today, just to, again, watch them now they're currently in. They were going one day a week in B. They started last Monday going two days a week in B. And again, we spent the morning with all of our administrators. And Dr. Hill went, Mr. Schultz went. And again, they were, you know, very generous to let us come and watch them have school today to observe, you know, the details of how they were doing Plan B.
Cindy, you may want, you were in that CNI meeting, you may want to comment on what we heard this afternoon in that CNI meeting.
Yeah, I was, like Ms. Carpenter, I was very pleased with the, I'll say enthusiasm our teachers had. They admitted in the CNI meeting, it's going to take learning, but they really felt that it was workable, and seeing it in action helped. And they would be sharing that at their respective schools. So I guess I felt a lot better because the teachers got to see it and have a voice, and saw things that worked and didn't work. And even our level directors, like Dr. Roth, commented about, you know, one of the planning elements that she saw, that she thought was something we should implement. So there was a lot of observation that went on. So I think it was a very valuable trip.
One thing I was impressed with, it wasn't all cookie cutter. One of the teachers said that they saw different teaching. It wasn't just, they were able to use their own teaching style. And I found that to be very interesting, too. And I found it to be very impressive.
Well, again, I left out Mr. Legram went with us, too. But we, again, they completely opened up their schools. We went to elementary, middle, and high. They answered, you know, any questions. We asked teachers' questions, administrators' questions, went to the weight rooms, went to the gym, you know, whatever questions there were. I think all of our administrators really wanted to see arrival, and kind of how they took temperatures, and how long it took. And so there were a lot of specific questions with that. But they were great. And again, we can't say how much we appreciate them opening their doors.
So they're on a Plan B, is that?
They're on Plan B, going two days a week, starting this past Monday.
And Sid, they found out PE could be done online.
Yeah, I went to the weight room today. It was one of the things that I wanted to see them do. And, you know, they took half of the weights out. Kids that were lifting weights could take their mask off, but the people spotting did. It was, it was really good, very impressive. It certainly helps us all figure out the best ways to have school.
Okay, let's allow Mr. Schumaker and Ms. Crimson to add. You have anything to add? Mr. Schumaker, Ms. Crimson.
What?
Barry, would you like to go first?
Go ahead, Barry.
Yeah, I was just waiting for an orderly, because I didn't want to speak out of turn.
It's your turn.
I think that's encouraging. Pardon? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for that report. And I'm encouraged to see that Union County is moving well. I did find out this morning that New York City is going to get shut down because their, numbers are gone to 3%, above 3%. I thought that was an interesting, they're literally shutting the city down to get, because they're going beyond the 3% infection rate, which I think is a little bit extreme. But the fact that we haven't gotten down to 5% is alarming still. But as far as I'm concerned, you know, if Ms. Carpenter wants to make a motion, then I'd like to hear what she has to say. But I'm going to be moot after this. So I'll close out my talk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schumaker and Ms. Crimson.
So, Dr. Lauter, I think I just wanted to ask, so Union County, had they went into anything other than Plan B from Plan C, they've not, this is their step up from Plan C and county-wide?
Yeah, that's right. They began in B going one day a week, and then this is their second week of going two days a week. And that's what we saw today.
Is that it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's all I got.
David, did you have an opportunity? Okay, and my only comment is, we did get the survey, and this survey was specifically for K-3, is that right? K-3 is what we're looking at?
Yes, Ms. Carpenter asked specifically just for K-3 to pull out. So again, I emailed that, and then I put it at all your desks.
So is that the same survey that you had sent us, the whole, the whole thing?
Yes. We sent you for everybody. And then Ms. Carpenter wanted to pull out K-3 since they were in A, and that's what you had.
You took that and decreed that?
That's right. That's, K-3 pulled out of the survey we sent you Friday.
All right. When I looked at it, there were numerous duplicates. But the issue here, it shows me that there's not one school here that half the families, 53% is the lowest one that I can see here. That's more than half of our families want their kids back in school. And this is Plan A. This isn't Plan B. This is, this is Plan A. More than half of our families want our kids back in school.
Well, that, what my major concern is the safety of the, and in A, there is not the social distancing. And I said it from day one. And with that in mind, I'm going to put a motion on the table for us to go to.
Is that on the agenda?
Oh, well, first of all, I have to amend the agenda, correct?
We talked about that.
Yeah, first, I would.
So the process, can you explain the process now? She wants to make a motion, she has to, we have to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
She had, I don't know if people can hear me or not.
Press your mic, Ken.
Am I okay now? Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Carpenter had talked about amending the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. And we had discussion about doing that later. She wanted, I think that was, I consensus is what I could tell. And so I think the proper approach would be to her to make a motion to agenda, to amend the agenda, to press an item and then the board.
What is your intent, though?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, then.
Yeah, but what's the intent?
Uh, to put a motion on the table.
That does?
Uh, that would, to, for us to put, to go into Plan B, all, everyone, K, pre-K, pre-K through 12, starting October the 19th. Wasn't that the date? We had October the 19th.
Okay, so that's the intention.
That's the intention.
So the first, that'd be a motion to amend the agenda.
I've got to amend the agenda first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second the motion to amend the agenda.
I've got to amend the agenda first.
So I have a request to amend the agenda, to add an action item.
To have an action item.
To move for, to move.
To Plan B, pre-K.
Pre-K to 3.
Yes.
Okay, discussion on the request to amend the agenda. I mean, I don't think it's, again, the public wasn't expecting us to vote tonight on anything. So I don't think that's probably appropriate to add it, but that's my thoughts. Ms. Crimson.
Are we going to discuss the amendment, or are you talking about discussing the motion?
We are discussing the amending the agenda at the moment.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's perfectly in order and doesn't require much discussion. Would allow us to move on to the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, well, let's vote on amending the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed, say no. No?
No.
That's two no's. Ms. Crimson, what was your vote?
I'm sorry, y'all, I cannot hear y'all. Again, try that one more time.
Okay, it's a vote to amend the agenda. And we have, we wanted to know what your vote was.
I'm perfectly fine amending the agenda.
Okay, so we have five in favor of amending the agenda, two opposed. That motion passes. So we are adding the item, I guess where we're going to add it? Right now?
It's going to be 4.03.
4.03? Okay, well, we're adding to 4.03. The item is Ms. Carpenter described, to request changing K, pre-K through, through third grade.
No, pre-K through, through 12.
Right now, we have, they're all on Plan B after third grade.
No, right now, we've got pre-K through 3 in A.
It's on, it's Plan A, so you want to change it.
And then we've got the other ones going in B, correct? I'm just saying, put everybody on B. Everybody. Pre-K through 12.
But everybody, 4th through 12 is on B.
Not everybody, pre-K through 12. Everybody's going to be on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the net effect is only changing pre-K to 3, but I think it's good to have one solid motion that decides, so that it's all encompassing tonight.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what we're voting on.
The only people this is changing is the pre-K through 3. This is the only people it'll be affecting.
Okay.
Because we've got them in A right now. And this is.
So our item, action item here is to discuss changing pre-K through third grade to Plan A, from Plan A to Plan B.
To Plan B.
Okay, so that's our discussion?
That's the only real difference it's making. And, and when we get the discussion, the real main difference is because we can't social distance them by these numbers that we have got confirmed now from what we were given. And that was one of my biggest concerns, was that social distancing. And we can do that.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, are we in 4.03?
We are in 4.03, yes.
And is there a motion on the floor?
Right now, it's a discussion.
Well, I gotta get a second. I gotta get a second. But that's what my motion, basically, let me specify my motion, to put pre-K through 12 on Plan B, B 2.0 is what you called it, right? 2.0, starting October the 19th. And again, I think we still need to have it on a review in case a number should go through the, like Barry had originally said, to be reviewed, to make sure, if our numbers go through the roof, I would like to have it on a review, reviewed every two weeks, whatever you.
The only, you probably also need to address centralized placement. That was the other thing that was part of the last motion.
Centralized placement?
Mm-hmm, for our special education.
I was getting ready to be my question, what's going with the EC kids?
Right.
So we just say centralized placement? How did we address that on the last one?
I think that you said the last time it was centralized placement, and also OCS classes, which are part of all that, that was how you referred to it last time.
Yeah, Dr. Lauter, I do believe that was in Plan B 2.0.
Was that in the plan?
Is Dr. Hill here? She's not here.
No, she's presenting tonight.
Okay, I think it's, it's good to clarify, but I think that was in Plan B.
It was. I just want to, because when you kind of say, making it one motion, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what.
Well, ditto to what he said. If it was in plan, in that plan, so make sure those two items are addressed. You said special placement and?
Yes, centralized placement for exceptional children's programs and OCS, which is.
Okay, and that's in the motion.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if that's the motion, is a second now in order?
Did you read, can you read it one more time? So then, then yes, it needs a second.
Okay, pre-K through 12, with the special placement and OCS.
S.
S in place, to start October the 19th with every two weeks for relooking at the numbers, to make sure they don't increase, but review of the numbers, which y'all are doing now.
Yeah, the clarification needs to be, though, that centralized placement and OCS are four days a week.
Four days a week. Okay, they're four days a week, and the others are two days a week. But it's, that's what the plan is.
So you've made a motion, made a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
Does, just a clarification, does the motion include the four-day-a-week for teachers and their children?
Well, that plan had that, where they get, you know, that's in that plan, that 2.0 plan, where they get the, you know, that's all in that plan. It's his original plan.
If that's the case, I would like to second the motion, please.
It's his original 2.0 plan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I guess the motion, as I understand it, is to, for pre-K through 12, everybody's in Plan B, except for centralized placement and OCS is four days a week. And then you're to review the data every two weeks, as we've been doing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, discussion on that motion. We'll start on this.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I need clarification. So the teachers themselves in Plan B have the ability to bring their children to school with them all four days, correct?
Yes.
That's in Plan B 2.0.
I want clarification of what, what children will actually be in the, in the building four days a week.
So the way that will work is if we have an, anybody that's an employee of Cabarrus County Schools, their child can attend four days a week instead of two days their child can attend four days a week instead of two days a week. So there won't be childcare issues.
So with that being said, how are we accounting for the numbers, knowing that those kids will be there? We really don't know what the number is of the number of teachers' children that will be on campus, and how that will, will affect social distancing.
So our, the teacher, the principals have already worked with that, they are, they've already communicated to find out what people had that choice, and then they'll balance the classes. Um, but there's, there's not a problem with being over 50% capacity with that as an option.
So I'm hearing you say that, we received an email that one of the teachers was responding, that, that was a concern, that if she's allocated, for instance, nine now versus the 13 she thought she was gonna get, but yet, I wanna know where the, the teacher slash parent numbers, kids, the student numbers considered in that number. So are we sure that nine now is not 10 or 11 versus nine included that number that was gonna be in that classroom and included the actual teacher's child or children?
Yeah, so employees, employee. Employees had a survey that they had to, to answer also, so the principals would know who's planning on attending four days a week. And they already have all that for 412, so the only group that we would be talking about that now would, would change would be K3, and that's not, not a concern. The principals work to balance that, just like they would with anything else. So.
So I just wanna make sure I'm clear with that email. In the numbers that y'all have decided, this number for the social distancing that will be met included the teachers that would be allowed to bring their, their children on campus.
Yes, what we haven't done is when you guys passed Plan A, then K3 was coming four days a week anyway. So now, K3 is only gonna be coming two days a week, but employees' children, if they choose that option, can come four. And so the principals will have to get that information from the K3 employees, but that, that won't be a hard thing to do.
Okay, that, that is what I'm really saying, you know? If that is, if we know the K3 numbers on this sheet, what, what's been indicated, but yet, they, we're, we're real, still not real sure of what that actual number's gonna be, because they're all over the place per school, as we see, there's some 80%, some 50%. So we're not real sure, according, if you go from school to school, then break it down from classroom to classroom, if that number is pressing at the 83%, we brought them back in Plan B, and I know you, you're gonna allocate those out for the social distancing, but if their children have not been included in that number, could that push that 83% that now become, instead of 23 or 25 students, down to 12 or whatever that is, back up to like 15?
Yeah, so again, the principals will have to work with that, they'll balance on those days. But again, if we have, if you have a kindergarten class that's only 80% full, and they're only coming two days a week, then there's only gonna be 40% of the class there at one time, plus an employee's child who may be there. So that's not really gonna be a major problem, the principal just have to balance that out to, to make sure that you're, you know, you don't have a capacity problem.
Mr. Chairman? I just wanna clarify, in the original motion, uh, on September 21st, I believe it was, um, we included moving the teacher workday, that has already been updated in the calendar, so we should not have to vote on that portion of the original motion again.
Right, that's not a part of her motion.
Okay, I just wanna clarify.
Do I need to add that?
Hmm, it's already changed. I just looked it up.
Okay, further discussion, Mr. Schumaker?
Uh, I don't wanna drag this out, so, no, I don't have a whole lot more to add. I think most everybody's covered my concerns.
Okay, Mr. Harrison?
No, sir, no more comments.
Ms. Hurtgen Ball?
No other comments?
Ms. Blackwell?
So I just wanna say that based on this information that Dr. Lauter, uh, gave us today, basically what this shows me is that K through three parents, almost 70% of them want their children to go back to school. And that was with Plan A as the option. I think that social distancing between the children to the actual teacher, um, if the teachers are concerned about making sure that they're socially distant, distancing from the children is appropriate, but based on the numbers, we, we continuously talk about numbers, and what the numbers are showing is that children are not transmitting this virus in the same way that adults are transmitting it to each other. I think that going backwards is a detriment to these kids' education. I've seen them do the, the virtual learning, and not every child thrives with this. Um, this is not ideal for a lot of children, and that is evident based on the 70, almost 70% of K through three parents that want their children to go back to school. I think that we are taking away that option for them. Um, and I, I just think this is not a good idea. So those are my thoughts.
And again, my thoughts are what I've said before, is we didn't tell the public we were voting on this. We probably should get some public input, it'd be nicer if we allow them to speak next week and then vote on it. But, uh, it doesn't appear that the board wants to do that. And the other part is again, you know, as our, as our governor has allowed for Plan A, and the head medical expert for the state of North Carolina tells us here in a press conference that the current science shows younger children are less likely to become infected, have symptoms, experience severe disease, or spread the virus. There was nothing in that, that press conference that said that everybody, the kids had to be socially distanced, and they said K5, K through five would be fine going, going back to school. And that's what they've encouraged us to, to start doing. So and that's what we were trying to do on a, on a smaller scale than the entire K5 population. That's my points. Um, any further, anything else before we vote on this?
Well.
Mr. Chairman, I just want.
Chairman, I have a big little comment.
One minute.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, Ms. Carpenter, if the numbers drop and the ratios decline in the next couple of weeks, and this peak here trends downward, and we get that in the report, what is your recommend, and that's the reason why I wanted to, I agreed to amend the agenda, because I want this discussion completely on the floor, because mine was voted against last week. So we do need to have full disclosure and discussion. So what is your, uh, recommendation gonna be if the numbers are declining, which is what we talked about, that we would always be taking a second look at?
Again, one of my major concerns is the social distance, and it's for the children and the staff. We've got to think of both of them. We know what the children, the children, as, as he stated, the children, but we've got to think of the staff too. And that's where a lot of the concern is too. Uh, we know the children, most of them, the zero to, we know from 10, the zero to 10, normally, they do not usually, they do not usually get the disease, and it's usually not as severe. But the teachers and staff, we've got to think about.
So Caroline, I think her question was, is there any, any threshold that?
But we, we've got to keep, I, I, if they start, if the numbers start going down, and then CDC and the other people think, well, social distance is not as important. I, I'm watching all the numbers, and I'm watching what they say. If they don't think social distance is, is, is important, but that's a very big concern. You said safety, Holly yourself, you said safety needs to be, and you had said social distancing yourself. Did you not?
I did, but where did, I did, I absolutely did, but where did the, and I, and Dr. Lauter, maybe this was a question for you, that came out, um, I'm not sure in which report or email, I, we've gotten so many. Where did it, where was it placed or recommended that the three feet was gonna take place? There were some teachers that sent something out that they were being told that there was gonna be a three, three feet social distancing to take place. Are, are you aware of that?
Yeah, so I think the best practice that, you know, everyone, pretty much the standard is, is six feet of social distance. But there are some things from the World, the World Health Organization and other things that say, you know, three feet's better than one feet, and six feet is better than three. But the standard that pretty much everyone, you know, is recommending is six feet. But what, the question you're probably talking about is if the, when the school board voted for A, and there were gonna be some circumstances where there was not gonna be six feet, then we were trying to establish, well, what is the maximum that you may have in certain classrooms that have 25 kids in them, for example? And sometimes the answer was three feet. Um, and again, there are some, you know, different circumstances and different organizations, but pretty much the standard, I think, that we've all heard, and that the, the major recommendation is a minimum of six feet when possible.
So I just wanna make sure I'm clear, because I'm, I'm, I did, I wasn't sure where that number came from when I read that and that was sent. That three feet, I had never heard that, but evidently teachers were being told that, or advised that that may take place. I wasn't sure how, who came up with that, or where, you know, where it came from. But at the end of the day, if we got, if we're talking about pre-K through third grade, and you just use the number of 25 students, I mean, that would be the max that there possibly could be, because we took out fourth and fifth grade, so we know just by law, we can't have that many in any of those grades. And now you've just decreased it some, so I guess I'm a little bit lost in if, if we would've even had a max of 25, and that number's reduced by the percentage that's not gonna return, and you're, is that where you decided the three feet came in, and then how, how many kids would that? So I guess, I would like for the, you know, it's real important for me that the general public understands. You know, and just like Ms. Hurtgen Ball, back to the audit report, you know, I ask questions because I want the general public to understand what's being said. It's not that you don't read the information ahead of time, but you know that the general public really doesn't get it. If I get a little bit, you know, confused with the numbers coming in, I know they certainly do. So in everything that we talk about and discuss, it's very important to me that the general public understand where we pull numbers, you know, there was a email about why I didn't allow a metric in the motion when I made it last week or a couple of weeks ago. Well, if we would've used that metric of seven, um, and, Mr. Chairman, I think that was your words, and it came from Mr. Schumaker's, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight, because we wouldn't have even gotten to that number yet. But it's real important to me for them to understand, how are we deciding how many kids is gonna be in that classroom? That's a scary thing for them to hear 25, when we know that really is not gonna take place. So if you did decide, even at that 83%, which is the highest number, if it was 25, and that's come, and you social distance that amount of three feet, how many kids would that place in that classroom?
So I use as an example when I explain to you guys that we have dual immersion classes in our elementary schools that do have, there are no class size regulations for dual immersion. So those classes can have and do have 25 students in K 1, 2, and 3, um, because of the way that they're allocated, they're not class size limits. So every school that has dual immersion classes does have K 1, 2, and 3 with 25 students. The other class limits for, that pretty much are for individual classes in K 1, 2, and 3 is 21 students. So we can have a maximum of 21, most of the time the average is 18 or 19 in K 3. So if 80% of the kids are coming, and, you know, 20% are not coming from, you know, a class of, of 20, then obviously 16 students are gonna be there. If we have a class of 25, then 20 students may be there. So, um, those are, you know, that doesn't mean every class is gonna have that, but it does mean that we will have classes at every school that has, uh, we have some schools with 80%, some with 83, some with 85. Um, you know, those are classes that are gonna have more than 50% capacity, um, in K 3. And so those were the examples that I gave last week, um, when we, you know, said that what some of our concerns were about coming back in, um, with no social distance. The three feet, again, when the school board, um, passed Plan A, we had some teachers and principals who I think said, well, how are we gonna do this if I have 25 students? And we tried to figure out, well, what, if we can't be six feet apart, what will the limit be? And three feet was one of the ones that came up, depending on the amount of students in the class. And again, there are some other organizations that say, you know, three feet can be okay. Or the, again, the World Health Organization, that's not the standard, it's not what the Health Alliance, it's not what the CDC recommends, but, um, so again, the six foot standard is pretty much what we're operating on, unless we have a classroom where we can't be six feet apart, and that's what we were looking at based on the board's vote, um, from the past.
So do you feel like that the majority, and I get it on the dual immersion classes, and I'm, I'm not even sure exactly how many of those that we, we have, or what that, uh, looks like for that number. Do you feel, and I, I mentioned last week, or maybe the week before, do you think we've taken into consideration the usage of our mobiles?
Yeah, I think I said before, in the mobile classroom, you won't be able to have, um, you know, for example, 15 kids in the class, and then you wouldn't be able to put, you know, three students out in a mobile unit that would be part of that. So the mobile units would not change the capacity of the classroom.
You know, I guess that's just a little bit confusing to me, when I'm thinking about the reason we have them is because we're over capacity in the bricks and mortar building. So if we don't have the 80% in the bricks and mortar building, or the total capacity number, that would reduce the numbers we would normally have to put in the mobiles. I guess that just didn't quite make sense to me.
Well, the mobile units don't change the capacity in the classroom. So, you know, let's just say that we have two, two classrooms in a, in a brick and mortar building, so we could serve 50 students, and then we're out of capacity. The mobile unit is there because we have more students there than we have classrooms for. So now if we have three classes, then we need to have one in the mobile unit. That would still be 25 capacity for each one, so it doesn't change the capacity of our classroom. It just means that we have buildings where we don't have enough classrooms for the kids, so we put mobile classrooms in the backyard.
And, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, I just looked up the CDC website, and it is still listing six feet as social distancing. There may be something different in the school opening, but to me, that's just shortchanging what we should be doing in public. So we need to follow that, um, I'll say safer, um, distancing all over, so.
Okay, last, uh, go around here, anybody else before we vote on this side?
And one, one comment, and the last comment, uh, and we are getting the children back in school. We're getting all of the children in school. We're getting them back two days a week, we're getting them back safely, uh, with safe distancing, and we're taking everyone into consideration, the staff, the children, and everyone. And we're doing it safely, and that's my major concern.
All right, let's vote on this item. So, again, we are voting to move pre-K through 12. Everybody's gonna be on Plan B, with centralized placement and OCS going four days a week, and reviewing the data every two weeks. So all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so we have Ms. Grimsley, myself, and Ms. Blackwell opposed, and four others with, yeah, so that motion does pass. We are now moving to Plan B for K through, pre-K through third grade. Okay, Board, um, moving on to our agenda, we have 5.01, which is budget amendments. Can I ask Ms. Quetz to come back?
All right, good evening, Board. So now that we've adopted a budget last month, now it's time to amend it. So we have, um.
And those are up on screen.
I'm sorry?
They're up on screen, right? Maybe you can blow that up a little bit more so we can see it.
Right, so the, um, the state budget amendments are before you. This is really just timing, um, the way that the state sends the funds down. Had an increase to our SRO grant, which is great. Um, we had, um, an allocation of, uh, it's really E-rate funds that come through the state, and so that's what you're seeing there, all increases to the state budget. Okay, Dana, if you'll move down, please, or whoever's running. On federal, uh, same thing here, is timing of the allocations. Um, the first one is over 300,000, that is a, um, uh, allocation that the governor made for COVID. Um, so you see that there. The second one is our normal McKinney-Vento, um, funds. Obviously, we spend way more than that, but that is the amount of money that, that the federal government allocates um, to our district for McKinney-Vento. It's just a time. It's just a timing issue. And then finally, just a small reclass of our Title I funds there. Okay. On capital, we made a request to the county for additional $1.7 million for the new middle school. It was approved by this board in June 2020. And by the time that we asked for it at the county and got it allocated, now we're just hitting the books for it, $1.7 million. And then finally, just an adjustment for a better estimate for, part of that has to do with the ADM hold harmless. This is a small amount, but it's just a better estimate that we had than we had at the time.
Any questions for Ms. Quetz? Ms. Schumaker, Ms. Grimsley, you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Rob.
I'm good.
Okay, Board members, are we okay with putting it on consent?
Barry Schumaker.
Consent.
Is now exiting.
Oops.
Emily Wagner.
Is now joining.
Did he get kicked off or did he? Okay, we're going to take a little pause, see if he's going to dial back in. But our next item, when we do come back here, is 5.02, lease agreement with Bethel School for the creation of a community garden, which I believe is already existing there. All right, Barry, you coming back? Any idea what happened?
And he said earlier that he had internet problems at home or something. He was using a hotspot, I think.
It's not internet, though. It's phone. All right, I was hoping he would jump back in, but he has not. Are we okay to move to 5.02?
No, it looks like they updated the dates in it. So the first copy that we received didn't have the dates strained out, but it looks like it's correct now.
Mr. Lauter here, or is it? What time now?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that needs to be explained. I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
Well, the public may not know, so let's go over it anyway. Good evening.
Push the button.
Barry Schumaker.
Okay, welcome back, Barry. We're on 5.02.
Sorry.
Is now joining.
Hit the wrong button.
Pleased to be back with us. All right, so go ahead, Mr. Lauter.
I'm here to present the renewal of a lease agreement between Bethel United Methodist Church. It was originally with Bethel United Methodist Church. They have since changed their church name and it's now Bethel Church of Midland. It's about five months before the original lease was to expire. So it felt like it needed to go ahead and upgrade the name on the lease, so we'd go ahead and do the extension that was allowed for in the lease by another five-year term. So with that, we have presented the lease with Bethel Church of Midland for additional five years for the community garden that they have at Bethel Elementary School. They've done pretty much all that they asked, we asked them to do in the original lease agreement, and they've done a really good job of maintaining the properties and providing that space for the community garden.
And that it's fenced in too? It's fenced in, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it's fenced in. They have a garden shed there, they have boxes there, they lease those out to the community, and they even have spaces set aside for the school to use. They haven't reused, the school hasn't used them as much as they thought they might use them, but they're set aside for them to be able to come over and take advantage of the garden.
Questions for Dr. Lauter? Or not Dr., not Mr. Lauter, sorry, Tim. I did have one for Brian Shaw. So there's an existing agreement that was signed, when, in 2016?
Yes, sir.
So it was an agreement that had a five-year extension. Why would we not just do an amendment? Because if we're doing a new lease, then we have to have some recollection there was an old lease, otherwise you got two leases at the same time. That cancels the other one?
Yeah, it would supersede the other.
Right, it doesn't say that in here, though. And then we would need a commencement date and expiration date?
It's on the top there. Just needs to be filled in.
It's what?
It said just needs to be filled in whenever we approve it next week. It can be filled in. Suggest we put on consent?
I'd like to see the actual language that terminates the other agreement.
The language is exactly the same as the previous agreement. The only thing that's changed is the name of the entity, which is Bethel Church, and the date.
Yeah, the name and the term are the only things different.
Yeah, I think the board members are okay with it. It's already there. Obviously doing a nice service to the community in Midland. Mr. Schumaker, Ms. Grimsley, do you have any comments?
No, I believe.
Okay. Can you add that language to the agreement, Mr. Shaw? Can you add language to the agreement, Mr. Shaw, that cancels the other agreement, the lease that's existing?
We can do that. I think, again, if the same authorities sign a new lease, then that's going to supersede the other one. But we can add a paragraph, I think this supersedes it.
Okay, well, with that addition, I'd like, it's okay, it's consent for me. Anybody else? Consent?
Consent.
Okay.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Ms. Carpenter, are you okay with consent? All right, thank you, Mr. Lauter. Moving on to 6.01, which is YMCA Cabarrus County Schools Agreement. Superintendent Chris Lauter, that's yours.
Yeah, so I'll try to kind of summarize my understanding, and I know Brian and people from his office worked on the agreement. So I'll kind of, again, I'm not sure I can answer lots of detail, but I'll try to give you everything that I know of, and then Brian may can help me clarify a little bit. So the best, my understanding is that YMCA's in this current COVID environment can do some things in the childcare arena that they wouldn't be allowed to do if they pair with the school system. So the way that the law kind of changed, and again, Brian may correct me, but because of this environment, if they partner with the school system, they're allowed to do some things that they wouldn't and have not been allowed to do in other circumstances. So our local YMCA contacted me to say, can we enter into this agreement? It will help us, will be available for us to get some grants, and we'll be able to provide some kind of daycare issues that they wouldn't normally be able to provide. So I didn't know exactly what that entailed, but then found out from some of our partners in the large district consortium that many of them had entered into this agreement. So Charlotte Mecklenburg, for example, Winston-Salem Forsyth, those are both super, two superintendents that I talk to on a weekly basis. So kind of checked with them. They said, yes, we haven't had any problems with that. Our attorneys kind of looked at it to make sure there's no real liability in it. So yes, there's no real obligation that you're taking on by entering into the partnership with the YMCA. It just provides some things for them. And so then we had our attorneys work on it. I know Mary, I think, did that, and Brian can speak to that, to make sure that she kind of shorted up in the language that she was comfortable with. Once that happened, then I sent it back to the YMCA to say, as long as you guys are comfortable with the language that our attorneys have come up with, then us being a partner in this environment is something that we can do. And so, again, that's very high level. Brian may know better than I do, but that was kind of how we got here. And it appears that we can help them out significantly and not take any liability on if we sign the agreement. Brian, I don't know if you want to speak more to that.
Yeah, sure. There was special legislation trying to address the issue of a place to have some remote learning opportunities for school systems. And there are grants available. So many YMCA's across the state are entering into these agreements. A number of our clients were. We took this agreement and matched up with some language that we'd approved for some other YMCA's. We looked at the language of Charlotte Meck, there's Rowan, I think, had an agreement we looked at, Winston-Salem. And basically, we just wanted to make sure in the agreement that it was understood that it was there, they were running the program and they were responsible. It's a benefit to us, but it's their program, really. And we're comfortable with the language. We do not think it adds any liability for the Cabarrus County Schools, and it can help parents provide a place for some remote instruction.
Okay, thank you. We'll go around the room. Ms. Carpenter, any questions?
Are they going to give any kind of discount or any kind of thing for our employees or anything, for childcare or anything? I was just trying to see if there was anything in there for that because I saw one thing, but then it seemed like it backed back out of it. Did you put?
Yeah, Ms. Furtenball had some questions that she sent, I actually sent to the person who's working as the director of the YMCA right now, and he answered those. Ms. Carpenter, I mean, Ms. Furtenball, you may remember some of them. I think there was a slight discount. Is that correct? If I remember right, it was like $10 or something?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I believe it was a $10 discount.
Yeah, $10 below the member rate. That's right. Yes, he says it's a parent responsibility. However, as mentioned above, Cabarrus County Schools employees are offered a discount of $10 below the member rate for the program regardless of whether they're YMCA members. So there's, there is a little discount.
Okay, so that was.
That's it all? Ms. Blackwell? Ms. Furtenball?
My only question is about, there was a reference in some of the responses I got from you, Dr. Lauter, that said it needed, they had to know today. Even though they can anticipate or intend to agree to this, should we go ahead and approve it tonight to have today's date on it?
Yeah, they did not act like in the response that that was a major issue, but it did sound like it will help them. So unless there's major objection, I think that would probably help. And I know they were going to be trying to, you know, listen in, but he tried to put in writing the answers to the question. So it probably would help them. Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda again to approve this YMCA agreement tonight, so it can be dated today.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second discussion. What's wrong with consent?
But in one of his answers, he said, these funds are available first come, first served to organizations, and the application window opened on September 28th with an application deadline of today, October 5th. Therefore, we would be extremely grateful if it were possible to have the agreement in place as soon as possible to improve our opportunity for funding. So I don't think we want to wait for consent. I think we want to vote tonight.
It's already well past any time I could submit.
I can't understand.
If they're trying to submit something by today, it's late for that.
Yes, but they may have already submitted it, knowing that we were going to do it, but I think it would be helpful to have it recorded as today.
I agree. I think, again, based on what he said, it would help them. I don't know that it would completely block it, but it probably would help make it an easier process.
Okay, anyone else on discussion?
This is on the motion to amend the agenda first.
Yes. Okay, all in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. I'll be a no. Okay, that motion passes six to one. We added that into the agenda, so we have. Any further discussion? Are we going to make a motion? Or have you, go ahead and make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with approving, we actually don't have it written on here. We proceed with approving the YMCA Cabarrus County Schools Agreement, memorandum of understanding as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion? Mr. Schumaker, Ms. Grimsley, do you have anything to add to this?
I just believe this is a really good thing.
Okay.
Mr. Walton, let me take a couple of comments. Among the things we made sure we included was a reference to the Jesse Paul Lunsford Act, which is checking to make sure nobody who is working with children would be a registered sex offender. Criminal background checks, specific reference to any student information being confidential, that those are sections, paragraph 2F through H. And then paragraph six provides an indemnification arrangement for YMCA to indemnify Cabarrus County Schools, et cetera. So with those additions, we felt that it was, it had a lot of pluses and very good seating neighbors.
So why is, any other groups would have been eligible for this too, like the Boys and Girls Clubbers?
I think other groups could be available, but it's incumbent on them to seek a grant in that school system. What we have seen is primarily YMCA's.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay, any further discussion? Ready to vote on this one? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. And we have come to the end of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for one clarification.
Yes.
Dr. Lauter, will there be a new survey sent out with the change of K three from A to B?
Yeah, we already have it. I think you guys and I already have an email from a parent basically saying that I was comfortable with B, but I didn't want A, so now will I be able to choose B? So I think the answer is we're going to have, schools are going to have to work with them, although obviously it would only probably be elementary school. But sometimes, so the answer is yes, we're going to have to gather some more information to make sure we know who's coming. As much as I'm sure everybody does not want to do another survey, I think it probably is going to require one.
And I think at least it's only for the K five audience. Well, actually, pre-K two, I guess, because we changed that, so.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any else? Yes, Ms. Grimsley, go ahead.
Point of clarification as well, talking about surveys. Have we actually surveyed the teachers and gotten numbers of who will be returning, will not be returning?
So principals are working with their staff, you know, with the assumption that, you know, whatever the school board chooses in their plan, that they're going to be able to teach their classes. And so if for some reason they're not available to do that, then the principals are working with their staff, and if it, you know, calls for that, working with HR to make sure that they're prepared to be able to do that. So there's not a specific survey for that, but again, they have to know who's going to be there and who's going to be available to run their school, and they're certainly aware of that.
Right, I guess that question, do we have an idea if we're going to have that teacher shortage? You're saying now that the motion has passed, will we get a report of that through HR of who's returning, who's not returning, so that you'll kind of have an idea of what's going to happen?
Yeah, when people, you know, now some people who may have been uncomfortable under, uncomfortable under A may be comfortable under B. So that could change some of it. But as I've told you guys, you know, in the past, whether it's parent surveys or, we won't know for sure until we're back, but principals are absolutely aware of that. Doesn't mean that, you know, someone couldn't resign tomorrow or make a different decision, but as soon as that happens, then principals are working on how to make sure their schools are covered. And right now, we're in good shape with that to be able to, what looks like now, be on Plan B on October 19th.
So we do not feel like we have any type of additional teacher shortage due to the situation? Is that what I just heard you say?
Yeah, I would say right now, we have what would be a typical teacher absence. I mean, with, again, with 2,500 teachers, then some of them may, you know, decide tomorrow that they're going to resign or retire, and it may not have anything to do with COVID or Plan A or Plan B. So that's an ever-fluctuating number that obviously principals are aware of every day and working on, and they work with HR to make sure, you know, we have people in the classroom, because again, people have always retired, resigned, moved. Again, it's one of the, you know, issues that comes up when you have 2,500 teachers and 4,000 to 5,000 employees is it rotates. But do we have a major problem in that area? No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, great. And if we were to, I guess I was thinking about our retired teachers, would we have the ability to bring them back?
Yeah, so if a teacher has, you know, been out for six months and follows all the law, then they're eligible, depending on what vacancy is open, then employees are eligible for that. They're still not supposed to work more than 29 hours a week. So sometimes, for example, a retired teacher may teach two classes at a high school and teach half the day or cover for how that works. So yeah, that's always an ongoing thing that we're, you know, some. So yeah, that's always an ongoing thing that we're, you know, sometimes in certain situations using retirees. So when they meet the letter of the law, then yes, and that has, has always been the case since that that law was passed.
So I was thinking, I saw where that law was changed last year or revised, where those, the sunset law was relaxed and/or even done away with? I don't remember the exact verbiage, but I was thinking about that, if we got into a critical situation, if that law had been changed or relaxed. Is that not true?
Yeah, Brian can probably talk about the law. No, he and I talked about it in another circumstance. I think what the law said was when this all happened in March, it said that you don't have to sit out the six months starting in March to be able to cover, but we're now past that six months anyway, so I'm not sure it's relevant, but Brian may correct me and talk about what that law said.
Yeah, it's been a while since I looked at that, but as I recall, the six months could be waived if there was a necessity for the employee to come back. And then that was always the issue, how do we prove that there was a necessity or not? But I don't think we're in that situation.
Yeah, those were actually specific--
Okay, thank you.
That was, those were specific to COVID. So what it was saying is, like Brian said, it gets really technical to make sure you meet the letter of the law, but I think what the law said was if there's a vacancy specific to COVID, then you can skip the retirement time, and so it gets a little complicated. And it's not really that great of an option, especially there, but it, but it may have been, especially when this was beginning. So it's an option, but it really doesn't give us that much more than we have currently.
No, that's not the one I'm talking about. I'm thinking, and I've got a note here, this was dated like January the 15th of 2020, so that was before COVID, and it's Senate Bill 399, which states that in a high need, in certain high need issues, so that was before COVID for sure, that that law or that sunset law would have expired, and it lists a new criteria that allows that to take place. You know, I know I'm kind of throwing your curve a little bit if y'all haven't gotten that, but--
Can we research this and get back with you?
Yes, absolutely. It's exactly what I was going to say.
All right, let's do that. And I have one more other point of clarification. Next week, we are having our business meeting, still going to be in person. We do have public comments, so are we arranging to allow our public to commentally speak to us? Even if it's one at a time? I'd like to see it.
It'll have to be like an in-the-building, out-of-the-building type rotation.
However, we can arrange it.
We'll still be under the 20, 25--
It's a lot better than emailing us.
Man, they won't--
Board attorney, read the comments.
If that's what the board decides, again, I checked with some other districts. It sounds like when they have done it, like you said, let's say we had three people who wanted to make public comments, then they would be outside, and maybe you put three chairs in the hallway, and one would come in, make their comment, and then they would leave the building, and then one and one. So if that's what, that's the wish of the board, yeah, Mr. Harrison's right, you'd actually come in that way and go out this way, kind of a one entrance and exit. That sounds like what they have done, so if that's something you guys want to permit, then we'll certainly work to try to make that happen.
Anybody object? Okay, just make it happen. All right, that's it. Anything else before we, you know, motion to adjourn?
Should move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Furtenball. I don't think we're having any discussion, but all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are officially adjourned. We will see you next week.